I will ask if everyone will please silence your cellphones. We have a full room, and so we want to make sure this goes as smooth as possible without interruption. So please take this time to please silence your cellphones. Today's invocation will be given by Pastor Dwight Benoit, Magnolia Missionary Baptist Church. If you so, please stand for the invocation and our nation's flag. Thank you.
To our esteemed and honored mayor, Ms. Robin Mouton, to the city council, to clergy that is present here today, and to interview my friend, let us pray. Dear God, our Father, it was your voice, your word, your will, that turned us from sleep to service in this another day. Thank you. Every turn we've made thus far has been because of you. And in some, we've trusted you; in others, we trusted ourselves or another. Please forgive us, we pray. You've turned us to this another city council meeting with our mayor, Ms. Robin Mouton, council members-at-large, Mr. Turner, Pastor Fashaw, councilmen, Mr. Neal, Mr. Getz, Mr. Samuels, Mr. Dureo, our city attorney, Ms. Reed, and interim city manager, Mr. Boone, city clerk, Ms. Broussard, and each supportive member with our city and communities at heart. And now we turn to you. Your eyes never slumber; your hands never rest; your heart never cease to beat with love and grace and mercy and compassion; your shoulders are never weary to carry all of us, even with the burdens that we bear. Guide us today. Remind us that we are only as strong as we are united and as weak as we are divided. Make clear to us that equality is only sameness, but equity is fairness. Making sure that those that you have called us to serve get access to the same opportunities that you've provided for all. We turn to you and with all in mind, for together we stand and divided we fall. We ask it in the name of Jesus. In the name of Jesus. In the name of Jesus the Christ, we ask and we pray. Amen, amen, and amen.
Please join us in our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we get started, I would like to recognize some dignitaries that are in the audience today. We have a number of clergy, including my pastor, Pastor Edison Colbert, and many, many other pastors. I would also like to recognize Sheriff Xena Stevens, our school board president, Dr. Allen, also NAACP president, Michael Cooper, also Judge Brown, and Mr. Segi. And if I've missed anyone, my husband is here today. Thank you. May I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Mouton.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Dureo.
Here.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Present.
Councilmember Felschaw.
Present.
Councilmember Samuel.
Present.
And Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Today, we have a presentation by Mr. Ron Fletcher, customer service manager, and Mr. Mark Delvin of the Energy Efficiency Coordinator, both of Energy Texas, and our very own Keith Folsom, who is the facilities management director here for the city of Beaumont. If you'll all please come forward, you're here. Thank you.
Good afternoon, councilman and mayor. I want to give you a little brief description of what this project and this presentation is about. Next door at the Civic Center, we upgraded the lighting in the arena. And in that process, we took advantage of some incentives through Entergy to help pay for or help fund this program. And what we end up doing, we replaced like 104 1,000-watt metal headlight fixtures with 55 new 240-watt LED fixtures. The LED fixtures, and they may have some real numbers, but they have potential to save us quite a bit of money on an annual basis by going to LEDs. Plus, the long-term short maintenance will be lessened on that because the bulbs will usually last us five-plus years. So that reduces the amount of replacements that we'll be facing. The city's initial investment in this project was $46,100, and Entergy will give us the amount of the incentive. I would like to give special thanks to Entergy and this program. They're very good to work with, make it easy to go through the process. Clear Results is the contractor that handles this and kind of monitors it for Entergy. They're a real good team also. I'd like to thank Steve Wilson with Puterman Insurance Associates. He is a big help in helping us design and do the layout. And last but not least, my electrical staff in making the installation go through. So at that point, unless you have any questions for me, I want to hand it over to Ron to give him their spiel on it.
Thank you, Keith.
Good afternoon, mayor, city council members. It's not often we have the opportunity to give back funding to the city, but we're really appreciative of this opportunity. This program is something that we're very proud of in working with reducing the energy efficiency throughout the city. And we hope to do more. But I'm going to ask Mark Delavan to give us more information on the amount and how we came about. Mark?
Thank you.
Well, thank you, city council. So my name is Mark Delavan. I manage the Commercial Solutions Program that helped provide this incentive for the city. So what this program did, what Keith talked about, is we did change out the lights at the Civic Center. And with that, we were able to generate a $14,000 incentive. Now, the way that Entergy pays out incentives is it's based on the energy that you saved. So this project ended up saving 70 KW in over 274,000 kilowatt-hours. Now, in layman's terms, what that means is the city is going to be able to save an estimated $24,000 on your electric bill. So that's a decrease in energy savings. And what Keith also said is you have a decrease in maintenance savings. So this is going to help the city use those funds in more appropriate areas to make further investments for the city and for your community. Now, the great thing about energy efficiency is not only are you going to save on your utility bill and kind of save in your pockets, but you're also helping save the environment. By reducing your kilowatt-hours, you're actually reducing carbon, and you're helping the environment. And by doing this project, you've estimated saved, I lost my savings, 44 cars off the road. So about that energy that you were saving kilowatt-hours, it's equivalent to taking 44 carbon cars off the road. So it's a two-pronged approach. So you're saving in your wallet, and you're saving the environment as well. Now, Keith, I did a great job telling you about this specific project. But the great thing about the city of Beaumont is you've been a long-term participant of the Commercial Solutions Program, going back to 2009. You've done multiple upgrades just to the Civic Center alone, along with some of the new fire stations. And you've been a big participant in something called our Midstream Program. We were able to buy bulbs at a discount from Excel Energy, and you've been able to purchase over 9,000 bulbs and fixtures through the Midstream Program across the past four years. And that equates to almost hundreds and hundreds of KW that you've been able to save. So with Entergy, we're very grateful for the partnership that we have with you, and we're very thankful that you've been able to be a big participant in our energy efficiency program. So it's my honor to present to you this check for $14,000.
Well, thank you. I want the whole audience to see that check because that's a savings to everyone. Do anyone have any questions for them or any comments? Well, thank you. And anytime we can get a check like that for $14,424, we appreciate it. And if you would come forward so that Angie could take our picture, we'd love to have it. Again, thank you so very much, and we appreciate it. Now's the time for any citizen that would like to speak public comment. If you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room, hand it to the clerk to the front of the room. She will call your name. When you come up to the podium, you will have three minutes to speak. The green light will come on at the beginning of your three minutes. The red light will be your indication that your three minutes are up.
Rhonda Rubin, 470 North 15th Street, Beaumont, Texas, item number one on the agenda.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and Beaumont City Council. Thank you for allowing me to address this great body. My name is Rhonda Rubin. I have been a resident of Beaumont for over 40 years. I come before you to speak about my personal and professional knowledge, skills, and ability of Mr. Kenneth Williams. I've known Mr. Williams for over 23 years. We used to go to Lufkin, Texas, and learn how to officiate basketball game, and he was our trainer. I, like many, know he will continue the process and institute new initiatives that will continue with the growth of the city and known as a servant leader for what he does. Through the years, I have watched him ascend the new leadership heights as he moved from high-performance cities to superb-performance cities with continuing improvement for the citizens' quality of life. Kenneth is a man of impeccable integrity, possesses broadened range of knowledge and experience regarding the city management and the personal needs to elevate Beaumont to the next level. Beaumont will be in a better place, realizing the untapped potential and realizing new heights if you appoint Mr. Kenneth Williams as a city manager. Again, I thank you for this opportunity, Rhonda Rubin, a good citizen.
Thank you, Ms. Rubin.
Terry Roy, 9150 Shepherd, Beaumont, Texas, item number one on the agenda.
Good afternoon. You know, it's ironic that it's raining because, you know, rain is what usually washes away all the bad things. And now it's time for Beaumont to change. You know, while the previous staff have done some great things, even some great things for me, it's just time that we stop doing those things and get ahead of them, to be proactive. And if we keep what we have, we're going to continue to be behind. That's no disrespect to anybody. You've done what you could, and that's that. Now it's time to change, to bring somebody on different, to get past our egos and our mediocrity. It's time to stop being mediocre. This city has so much potential, and it seems like nobody wants to reach that potential. You'd rather fight from behind than to try to get ahead. And today is the day to start. And the guy that we have, y'all have selected, is the perfect person for the job. And if we don't do it this time, we're not going to never do it. So you have to get your egos out of the way if you ever want to grow as a city. I mean, I have an ego also, but I know how to give in. And if you don't give in today, you're not going to never give in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roy.
Mayor, I have Montez Powell, 3780 Crow Road, but he did not check one of the boxes. So I'm not sure if he wants to speak on an item on the agenda or do in the public comments section. Montez Powell? Christopher Matthews, 3875 North Major Drive, Beaumont, Texas, speaking on item number one on the agenda.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, City Council. I'm going to just get straight to the point. Councilmember Ward, too, you got a lot of rumors out there on social media about this issue. And I'm going to just be honest. You appointed a city attorney here to give you legal counsel. And by you going to seek other legal counsel, that's very disrespectful. And it sends a message that she's incompetent, okay? There are other things that y'all are negotiating and dealing with, and I don't see you seeking legal counsel for that, outside legal counsel. And the perception, there's perception versus reality, which in this case, I believe it can be one and the same. I'm going to just be straightforward. It just looks like you got a candidate here with an outstanding resume, and it's like you want to nitpick because he's a black man. I'm just telling you the perception that you're giving Beaumont. City councilman-at-large, you too, your campaign, when you ran, you said you wanted to unite Beaumont and bring racial reconciliation to Beaumont. You are doing the opposite. You are creating division. This man comes with a resume. It was a small town, but they doubled in population, the fastest-growing city in Texas. And when you say that you want Beaumont to grow, and then it's like you get cold feet about little things like this, it's like you're not really being honest, you know? Y'all know what it is. Y'all know what it is. Quit playing games. Like, Beaumont is trying to grow and trying to get better because we've actually taken a step back population-wise. And I'm not disappointed because I kind of expected things like this. But somebody's got to speak to the elephant in the room. And we got to stop this racial division and stuff like that. We're trying to get Beaumont to grow. I don't care how you vote, you know, because I'm going to just end my comment right there.
Thank you. Tony Renfro, 6110 Bankston Lane, Beaumont, Texas, item number one.
Good afternoon, council and mayor. This is just a continuation from last week, and I want to speak to you today. The city council today is divided into two groups over the appointment of a new city manager. Group one wants to maintain a status quo. Group two wants to implement a much-needed change in directions and mythology. Group one is claiming the serving package is illegal. Group two is depending on the city attorney opinion, who says it is legal. Group one is interpreting the contract in ways to justify their choice by claiming the manager can sleep with a subordinate or lied to the city councilman members and still get paid for it, or get fired, I'm sorry. Group two is reading the contract as it is read, where the manager would be fired for good cause without serving pay. Group one is raising hell over a potential service payment of $300,000. Group two is willing to risk $300,000 out of a $300 million budget to give the city a new boost. Group one knows that group two got the majority vote. And instead of working with them to move the city forward, group one is choosing to fight a lost battle and further divide this beautiful city. May 2023 elections are coming. May God help Beaumont if group one becomes a majority. May this hatred we are seeing today further motivate group two to become a bigger majority. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Renfro.
Christopher Jones, 1045 Deucehead, Beaumont, Texas, item number one. I think Angie's going to check and see if he's out in the hall.
Is there anyone in the overflow room in the back?
I'm not sure. Is anybody in there?
You want to call the next person?
I don't have anyone else. He's the last person, mayor.
You'll just give us a few minutes. Thank you, Miles.
Please forgive me.
That's okay.
Angie runs faster than I thought. Good afternoon, mayor and council. My name is Christopher Jones, and I come to you to address you again on the deliberation and hopefully, especially being that it's an agenda item today, instead of just, I guess, rumors of who you were going to appoint. Today, the decision of the hiring of a new city manager with the listed considerations on behalf of many citizens, civic groups, and organizations, we would like to recommend that you do not consider, and we're glad about that, the interim city manager for the management position and ask that you install Mr. Williams as the new city manager of the city of Beaumont. We ask this because of the track record of the interim city manager, who was or is the developer of the city of Beaumont. During their tenure to the city, many of those I speak for today have been made to feel dissociated and even exiled from the city of Beaumont, especially when it comes to community engagements with options of resolve. We are not willing to go down the same roads, experience some of the same practices, or have our issues unresolved. These practices were the dealings of the exiting manager and seem to be the actions and obvious trainings of the interim manager in place. Now is the best time, the best time, to set up this city for its new direction on one that we, the people, can support and rally behind. You want change? So do we. And we feel that today, mayor and council, that change must start with a new city manager. And the interim manager is not the option. We ask that your deliberation and eventually overall approval in this line item with the populace and many others that I represent from our great community by my attendance and addressing you today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
We have one more. Jerome Alexander, 1118 Avalon Street, Beaumont, Texas, item number one.
Good afternoon, everybody doing? I just come here today and let everybody know that I will vote for Mr. Williams to be the new councilman because every time I'd call Mr. Boone right here, he ignores my phone calls. And it'd be serious situations. And then I'm not going to sugarcoat, I'm just going to be honest. He'll just ignore my call. He'll get somebody else to call and be serious with this. So I think we need somebody in place that answers our phone calls when we call for things we really need. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I have one more, mayor. Sam Perigi, 445 North, I think that's 14th Street, Beaumont, Texas, item number one.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to say, take one page out of a good friend of mine's book. And that page was, maybe some of y'all will know who said it, but it was a pretty important man in my life. And that person said, "Who am I to judge? I'm not here to judge this deal. Y'all ought to know who to pick. Every one of y'all should know how to pick a representative for the city manager. I'm not here to do that. Y'all have made your decision, and I will abide by that decision. I'm not here to talk about blacks and whites. I'm tired of talking about blacks and whites. I'm born and raised in Beaumont. My family is born and raised here in Beaumont. We had Texas Coffee Company out on Port Arthur Highway for 101 years now, and it's still in operation. I'm not here to criticize any one of y'all. I know how you're going to vote, and that's your prerogative. You have the right to vote the way you feel best. But whatever you do, whoever you appoint, could affect what I do here in Beaumont because I am a developer. We are developers."
Excuse me, Mr. Perigi. Please turn your phones off. Thank you.
We are developers, and I refuse, I hate to listen to some of the comments that have already been made that we're not taking Beaumont forward. That's not correct. Maybe we didn't, maybe Kyle was here too long. I don't think we gave Chris a chance. We could have fired him and six months later, after we appointed him. But y'all two chose to hire somebody and give him a contract. I don't think it's ever been done, but I'm not here to argue. I'm not going to file a temporary restraining order against you or anything else. I'm here to say, I want to get past all this. I want to move forward. Beaumont is my town. As much as my wife wanted me to move out of Beaumont 20 years ago, I chose to live here in Beaumont. I own 10 cemetery plots at Magnolia Cemetery that I bought in 1987 when my father died. Do you think I'm going anywhere? I'm not. You're going to see my ugly face till I die. And I think I've brought some good to this community. At least, we rented apartments to both blacks and whites. We didn't discriminate. We don't discriminate. I don't even know how to spell discriminate. My family has worked with blacks and whites all our life. My father appointed Pooh Rickett, one of the first black salesmen in Beaumont, Texas, for Texas Coffee Company. He went to a grocery store.
No, go ahead because I interrupted you.
He went to a grocery store, and the white owner said, "I don't want the black salesman to call on me." My father went back, said, "If you want Texas Coffee Company's product, you will take your delivery from Pooh Rickett." The man changed his mind, and Pooh Rickett, to this day, is one of my heroes. So I'm not here. Odwin, I love you to death, and I had a long talk with you. I don't necessarily agree with you about your comments about Chris, nor mayor. I don't necessarily agree with you about yours. But you know what? I'm not here to fight that battle. I'm here to go forward. I want this city to grow. We have sold, because of the city manager, just so you'll know, we are doing a development outside the ETJ of Beaumont right now. And we did it because our water, our public waterworks director didn't want to bring us water in sewer, and because our city manager said, asked him, and he said, "We can't serve." We just sold a four-and-a-half-million-dollar piece of property to a chemical plant coming out of India. First chemical plant in the United States for them. And it's going to be about a 30, 40, 50-million-dollar deal. I just sold a chemical plant location out on 347, that OCI that you just read about in the paper. We all, I think, gave them some tax abatements. So I'm doing my part. I just want everybody else to do their part. Richard Guspens of the world has been a fine developer in this town. And a lot of people are out there, and I just want to keep going. I don't want to fight this. One of my best friends at Beaumont is Bishop Curtis Gilroy, and he is black. And I don't look at it as he's black. We travel all over the world together, and I never... We travel all over the world together and I never think about it. So, just please, when we leave this meeting, I don't, I want us to get along, and I want us to play well up here, and I want us to do the right thing. If Mr. Williams is the guy, then I'll support Mr. Williams. But he's gotta prove himself to me first before we go any further, and that's what I'm looking for.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Excuse me. Okay, I'm gonna call for a motion for the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carry. May I have the reading of item number one, please? City Attorney.
Item number one is to consider a resolution appointing Kenneth Williams to the position of city manager effective September sixth, two thousand and two? I'm sorry, two thousand twenty-two. Article five of the city charter defines the requirements of the city council regarding the appointment of the city manager and spells out the duties for the position. Mr. Williams has over thirty-four years of municipal government experience. Mr. Williams is the former city manager for the city of Buddha and also served as a city manager for the city of Di ball and the assistant city manager for the city of Lufkin. This item was placed on the agenda by Mayor Robin Mouton. Funds are available in the general fund to pay the salary and benefits for this position. Um, Mayor and Council, in your attached, um, to the resolution is a, uh, employment agreement, Exhibit A, that was posted. Um, there has been some amendments to that agreement, and I'd like to go over them with you now.
Thank you. Ms. Reed, could you please direct us to which page?
Yes, ma'am. So, actually, what I'm gonna do is pass out the agenda, the corrected versions, so we can all make sure we have the same versions. While that's being circulated, I wanna clarify some things for the public. This is not a contract. It does not have a start date or end date. It has a start date, that'll be his employment date, but it doesn't have an end date. It does not take away the ability of council to terminate Mr. Uh, Williams at will. Per the, the city charter, council does have the ability to fix compensation for the city manager, as well as determine any compensation benefits required therein. I'd also like to remind the council that the posting that was posted by our hired, um, firm to, for the position included a lot of the benefits that are addressed herein with the exception of the severance. Um, but if everyone has a copy, we can go ahead and get started.
Thank you.
So, in that first section on page two, one point three, that section has been amended to now state, um, the title is Continued Employment. This agreement is for an indefinite term. The anniversary date shall coincide with the city's fiscal year, which commences October first, for the purpose of salary adjustments in the severance period. Either party may decide to not continue this agreement for any reason, with or without cause. A notice by council to the city manager of intention not to continue this agreement shall be construed as termination event under Section six point one C and the Utah law of severance. Um, this section was amended to be more in line with the city's charter and to alleviate any concern that this was not an at-will employment. On page three, two point five deals with indemnification. The following was removed through insurance or at the risk pool coverage, in which case the manager right to agree to legal counsel provided by the manager will depend on the terms of the applicable insurance of the risk pool contract. The city is self-insured, so we do not contract with risk pool. Um, however, this provision deals with if he is sued in his official capacity or individual capacity as city manager. This is something that we extend to, uh, all city employees, um, if they're sued for doing their job, as long as he's not sued for, um, committing a crime such as assault. The city will defend him if he did, if he's sued in his official capacity. I'll point out to the mayor, you were recently named in a lawsuit, and you were served. We will, the city obviously is handling your defense as well. We've had other department heads that have been sued for actions that they've done in their job, so this is not a, a different coverage. But that language was removed to be, to coincide.
So this was the same coverage that every employee?
Yes, ma'am.
Received?
If an employee is sued for, um, doing their job, we cover there. We defend them in the city.
Thank you.
Um, page four, Section two point nine is an addition. The, the manager shall reside in the city limits of the city of Beaumont. That is, um, important, that's required by law, um, in our charter, so we added that to include that as well. Um, on page fourteen, Article five, Section one of the charter, it does say that he does not have to be a resident at the time of his appointment, but shall be, or shall be required to reside in the city of Beaumont, um, during his tenure as city manager. And I believe I made sure everyone had a copy of the charter, um, at their, at their seat.
Thank you.
Um, three point one, we included the word base salary. Um, so it reads with an annual base salary, and we took out the word rate. Um, um, three point three, same page, the city does not have vacation. We have paid time off, so any reference to vacation was removed in that section.
Could you please explain PTO?
PTO is paid time off, and the city has a policy, uh, city policy two point O, Section four. I do have a copy of the policy if council needs to reference it.
Would you state how long that's been in effect?
So this particular policy, um, was effective May twenty-nine, twenty nineteen. Um, it, it's obviously been, you know, it's probably been past that, but we've always, the city had vacation and sick leave at one point, and then we converted to paid time off.
So it's something that has been in effect, that has been used?
Yes, ma'am.
All along. It's nothing new.
No, yes, ma'am. It's something that all city employees are entitled to. But, um, this, this section was revised to come into compliance with city policy two point O, Section four. Um, we removed sick leave for the same reason, the city doesn't have sick leave. And then the compensatory time, um, that section was amended. Um, the manager is entitled to compensatory time hours during a mandatory evacuation period or city closure. Um, that is in compliance with city policy two point nine. You have a copy of the policy, if council would like to review that as well.
Okay. Also, can you say how long that's been in effect, and is it?
One for one, for every hour that he worked past forty hours in work period. Uh, so, uh, those eligible activities he was asking was, uh, including serving at city council meetings, city boards, or commission meetings. You struck that and took that out?
Yes, sir. All of that is out. Now, the city policy, and that's in the next section, we did add discretionary time. The city does allow for discretionary time in our policy, city policy two point O thirteen. That, uh, policy two point O deals with leave in general. So that section does allow for discretionary time. So now, that section now reads, "The manager is entitled to discretionary time based on business needs in accordance with the city of Beaumont policies and procedures. Accrual of discretionary time will not be allowed, nor will the manager be paid for discretionary time or hours not used," which means that we can accumulate discretionary time, because we do work longer hours, there are late council meetings, we do work on weekends sometimes, but we are not paid for that time, nor when we depart from the city will we be paid for that time.
So is that something new, or is that something that has always been in effect?
It's part of the leave policy would've been in effect in two thousand nineteen, yes, ma'am. It's.
Is it something that interim?
It's not new. It's not new.
Is it something that interim city manager was able to take advantage of also?
All, all department heads and department directors take advantage of this.
Thank you.
And I, I'd like to clarify that also. When you're, uh, an, a salaried employee, how does that work with discretionary time? I mean, pretty much your time?
Well, councilman, um, this particular weekend, just this, just this weekend alone, I was up here on Sunday for a very long time.
Right.
Reviewing this document. Um, you may not see me tomorrow.
Okay.
I'll take, I'll, I'll take a little discretionary time, but, uh, often people, there, there's also, like, just kinda, and I'm, I'm gonna pick on some of our department heads, you know, we, you might see us come in later than eight o'clock. City business is from eight to eight, to eight to five. Um, I can tell you that me and Molly always run a tight race. If she leaves before I do, she'll text me and tell me it's time to go home, 'cause we usually, they're building around six or seven. But, you know, we probably pull in at nine. So the discretionary time is not, uh, flex. We are professionals, so we, we never cheat the city, but I can tell you that, um, we'll never be able to take more time than we give to the city. Um, you know how often you call me? Y'all know how often you call and I respond. Um, and so that, that is work. Um, when you call me on a, on a Saturday or a Sunday, you have a question, that is work. Um, when we work past seven, past five, that is work. So, um, what the policy allows is for those professionals to be treated as professional, and there is some honesty in that. However, if Todd doesn't show up for two weeks because he feels like he's been working really hard on the budget, I'm sure he'll get a phone call.
Why pick on your job?
I have budget on the brain, but, you know, it's easy to pick on Todd. But, but to that extent, like, it is budget season, there's been a lot of work on that, but those guys still come to work. So if they choose to, you know, take an early day on Friday here or there, that's, you know, considered professionalism, but not in advance. But we do, department directors do monitor it, we monitor ourselves. The manager will have to do that as well. You guys will obviously, you know, need to monitor that. But that is something that is in effect for department heads and department directors.
Yeah, and that, to my point, I'm saying that you don't have people going up checking behind you to make sure, well, is the city attorney here today? And, you know, you, you don't have that kind of monitoring going on, and none of these professionals that are exempt employees would have that, would they typically?
No, the, the, I think the general rule is, if, if someone's looking for you, you've been gone too long, so. So no. Um, but that, that does that. Um, accrual was also amended. It says the manager shall be entitled to accrue carryover compensatory time and PTO, and will, any other administrative employee under, um, except as provided herein for the purpose of accrue and payout upon separation, the maximum amount accrued for the manager is, and this, it was originally five hundred, it was changed to be in line with our policy, which is, uh, one thousand two hundred and eighty hours. Accumulately beyond this threshold will expire and shall be forfeited if not taken. Um, this is again in accordance with the city policy two point O, Section four C. Um, I will tell you that new employees accrue, uh, accrue time at about, um, four point six-two hours rate, and that it's based on years of service, so the more years of service you have, the more hours you accrue per pay period. So it takes a really long time to get to that twelve eighty. But it was, again, amended to remove any reference to sick leave and to cur, uh, be in line with the city policy. The commencement.
One moment, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Turner has a question.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, just to be clear, you said the original, what, what he originally requested in the negotiation, it was amended to what, due to what?
So he originally requested five hundred, however, that was in conflict with the city policy, um, so we amended it to be in line with the city policy, and obviously, he wasn't opposed to that.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I heard that clearly.
Yes, sir. Um, upon commencement date, the manager shall be deemed to have accrued eighty hours to be used as PTO, which is acknowledged as having been accrued prior to the effective date of this agreement. These initial hours are not payable at separation. Should the manager's employment cease prior to his accumulation of PTO, he will not be paid for any unused time under this provision. Um, so all that says is that we are going to allow, um, Mr. Williams to have eighty hours, which is about, um, ten, ten days, uh, upfront, and he will not be paid for that time if he doesn't have accrual of PTO separation. Um, there is no city policy associated with this, however, this has been done historically. Um, we had a department director when he was hired on in two thousand and six that did receive eighty hours, and that was approved by the manager, so the city, uh, council can, can offer that as well.
Ms., Ms. Reed?
Yes, sir.
Let me understand.
Excuse me.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry. I, I was getting ready to ask her something. I'm sorry. Um, also, that was something that, um, Mr. Williams put in a request to the council because of some prior engagement that was happening.
Uh, yes, ma'am, it was a part of his original terms and conditions with the council. I don't know that, um, it was ever disputed, but I guess, like I was saying before, there is no policy that's associated with it. However, it has been done historically, and the council does have the authority to authorize that.
Thank you, councilmember Gibbs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So, let me understand, the effective date for Mr. Williams hired is September the sixth?
Yes, sir.
But if he doesn't show up for the first two weeks, he still gets paid for that, because that was done once before, and we don't have a policy for it, but am I understanding that correctly?
It, technically, yes, but I'm, I'm assuming that, you know, you show up for work on the first day.
I'm assuming so too, but he wouldn't have to, and he would still be paid for it, because it was done once before, and we don't have a policy for it. So, you know, what the city manager at that time did and why he did it, I can't answer. I don't know. I didn't even know it happened. But I think it's a, a fair question to ask whether or not we wanna have that
Absolutely.
As a policy or practice.
And I guess I just, I, maybe I didn't make it clear, but I wanna make it clear, I'm not advocating for or against it. I'm just putting it out to council with, what you guys have the authority to do and the changes that I made. And so when I said that it'd have historical precedent, it's because I was mentioning prior that everything else was based on policy, and this one incident is not.
And, and the policy, well, well, there is no policy for it, but should there become a policy for it, that would be promulgated by the city manager. That's not something that the council can actually weigh in, or can we?
So, the council obviously has its employees and everyone else works for the manager, so if that was a policy that the manager wanted to implement, then I guess he could, but I'm sure he'd have to talk to finance and HR about, you know, what would be the best practices for the city moving forward. Um, but I think it's important to note that it doesn't have any cash value, so the city isn't losing any money. So when he's using this PTO, if he doesn't use it, he doesn't get paid for it at all. So, so the, so the only value that it has is if he uses it while he's employed, but not if he separates.
I understand.
Okay.
But, so if he, again, with my hypothetical.
Yes, sir.
And I don't believe Mr. Williams would do this. I'm not suggesting that he would, but it does open the possibility that he could not show up for the first two weeks, and he would be paid for it. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Three point five, the word employee was amended to, to the city, just to be more consistent with the agreement. Um, and three point seven, um, any, the word contract was amended to the word agreement, and we removed the word superintendent to include the word manager. I think that was just a typo in the agreement. And three point eight, under expenses, we included the language "while on city business, including but not limited to seminars, conferences, and meetings." And so that line now reads, "The city agrees to pay actual and incidental costs incurred by the manager for out-of-town travel while on city business, including but not limited to seminars, counseling, and meetings." And that is consistent with the city policy. We do allow, um, department directors do have a budget for travel, and we do have a budget for training expenses.
Nothing new.
No, ma'am. Um, three point nine, um, the, uh, seventy-five replace fifty, um, and that is inconsistent with the policy, with city policy six point one, um, Section two. We allow for a seventy-five mile radius, as opposed to a fifty mile radius. So that was amended to be in line with the city policy. On page seven, we added a section that says, "Examination of Expenses. The manager shall cooperate with the city's finance director and/or their designated individual so that they can perform a complete examination of the manager's expenses in accordance with this agreement and the city's procurement policies." Um, most department directors, individual managers have what's called a city procurement card. Um, those are reconciled monthly. We are required to provide receipts and explanation for our purchases, and so that is standard practice within the city. In Section four point four, under technology, the word employee was amended to the word city, I'm sorry, the word manager, just to be more consistent with the contract, or the agreement, I'm sorry. Um, on page eight, under termination, um, we added the following. "The manager's inability to perform his duties with reasonable accommodations, including but not limited to illnesses, accident, injury, mental capacity, or health for a period of four consecutive weeks beyond accrued time, such as PTO, FMLA, or short-term disability." We also amended the last section that's now reads, "Council stating and writing their intention that this agreement not be continued in accordance with Section one point two." In page nine, A will now read, "Failure to fulfill the city manager's duty as required in this agreement." Letters E and F, the word knowingly, has been amended. And in Section H, that has been moved to class two. And again, a class two offense is something that is not, is paid, it's removal without pay of, um, severance. Um, yes.
You said E and F, the word knowingly, was omitted?
Knowingly will be removed, so now there's no, um, there's no mental safe word, so if it just happens, it'll just move, so it'll now read falsifying records or documents related. So it'll now read falsifying records or documents relating to the city activities. And then F will now read misrepresenting material facts.
The, the word knowingly still appears on my copy.
Yes, sir, that's a last-minute change. So I, I removed the word knowingly. And then H has been moved to class 2. And I apologize, Ms. Councilmember Gibbs, to bring that to my attention. I thought we, I thought I'd fix that and didn't correct it, as I appreciate you pointing it out to me. Because I did miss that, that's why I apologize.
So you, you moved H to a class 2 cause?
Yes, sir, and a class 2 cause is not payable. And then under the class 2, we removed the word indictment to just conviction to be more in line with the previous one. And that current obligations, the word PTO now replaces compensation time and vacation leave. On page 10, the word, in that first one where it says severance benefits, it now reads, "Severance benefits means continued access to health insurance benefits. The manager must inform the city in writing of his intent to elect to continue coverage under the city's medical plan at its own expense. For the severance period unless sooner the manager obtains further full employment." We, the city does offer COBRA, and we do allow employees to continue medical coverage.
Question, ma'am.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Councilmember.
I have a citizen, and I promised that I would ask this publicly for clarification. We are stating that we are not covering his wife's insurance. The city isn't responsible for covering his wife's insurance, correct?
And I just want to clarify, the city offers insurance to employees and their dependents. This contract is not paying for his insurance. The premium for his insurance or for his wife's insurance, he will pay the premium just like any other employee will. However, we've agreed to provide them insurance. So the city is a part of Blue Cross Blue Shield. We pay them, the employees pay a premium. So it's no different than my insurance package.
Thank you.
The severance period has been amended to read as follow. And this is a new addition, so it may or may not appear on your copy. Should the manager's employment terminate with less than two years of service to the city, the severance compensation shall be one year of the base salary. Should employment continue for a period of two years, the severance compensation shall reduce to six months for the base salary. Nothing in this provision shall constitute a term of employment. So you can still fire him, but the severance periods will be in effect for those periods. In section 3.2, section C, number 3, has been amended to read as follows. "The city's commitment to pay the value of all current obligations, severance amount, and the city's commitment to fulfill its obligations under the service benefits as defined above." And just so that you'll see that section a lot, the service benefit is that we're going to allow him to have access to our healthcare through COBRA and so forth.
Which he pays himself.
Yes. On page 11, 6.43, it's that same language, but it says, "The city's commitment to provide severance amount, including a specific line item, breakdown of items that constitute a total severance amount. The current obligations and the city's commitment to fulfill its obligations for the service benefits as defined above." And current obligations, just for clarity, would be if he has accumulated PTO time, we do pay that out. The waiver, which is on section C, has been amended to include the language, "The fulfillment of obligations of the service benefits as defined above." Just for clarity, just to be consistent. And the reason for that is that we're not paying for the service benefit. We're just providing obligations, the access to that healthcare. And D, D is straight out of the, the city charter. But we've added, nothing in this section shall alter or modify the city's obligation to the manager provided for elsewhere in this obligation regarding the severance. So the city charter does allow for a public hearing for the manager if he's terminated within six months. And so he is entitled to that under the charter, so we include it in the agreement as well. At 6.5, that deals with resignation. We've took out any reference to vacation and compensatory time and replaced it with PTO. We've also removed that last sentence. The provision does not address the resignation, so we've removed that sentence. And 6.6, we've removed any reference to the word renew, has been replaced to continue. We also added that this form of separation does not entitle the manager or his estate to severance pay or severance benefits. In section 7.3, savings clause, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Turner.
I'm sorry, but I just want to make it clear for citizens before we move on. So if he resigns by choice, he doesn't receive a severance.
Yes, sir, if he resigns.
I just want to make that clear. That's another, you know, comment that a citizen called me with. And that's something I think is important to ask, so everyone can hear the transparency. So if he does resign, he will not receive severance pay.
No, sir, if he resigns or dies, we don't pay severance, and we no longer allow access to this, our insurance to his spouse.
Thank you.
So the only thing we would pay out would be his last, whatever monies we're owing on his last check and his PTO. And 7, 3.3, savings clause, added the following. "Any reference to the city charter or city Boma policies and procedures shall be the latest version in effect." In 7.6, we added the line, and this deals with notice. It's his current address, but we said, or his then-current place of residence because the city does, the charter does require him to live in the city. And ma'am, that does conclude the comparison of the changes. But I also want to address that this is, his appointment is by resolution, just like any other, other appointments. When you appointed the city manager, the city clerk, the city attorney, we point by resolution. In the previous resolution, that was the last resolution that was appointed, it included the following language. "All other allowances, compensation, benefit, terms, and conditions of employment with the city of Boma would remain the same." And that's included in almost every resolution for employees that you guys appoint or approve. So all this agreement does is just outline in very specific details what those allowances, compensation, terms, and conditions of employment are. I don't view this as something that violates the charter. I don't view this as something that can't be done. It's just, it's a preference. We've never done it before. If council chooses not to do it, that's fine. But I, I have researched the issue. I don't feel like that this particular format violates our charter. And I don't feel like that it is something that should give council great pause. The severance package in itself does not create a contract. Like I said, we do resolutions where you agree to pay a base salary, additional compensation to ICMA's, and you offer car allowance and administrative allowance to the employees that you guys appoint. We've just never did it in this format before.
Thank you so very much for going through that line by line. What I want to say to the audience is that this could have been an executive item. I chose to do it publicly for transparency because I want the public, I want it on record, I want it on file, so that everyone would hear everything we would have said in the executive session. So therefore, it's out front. Every council that's sitting here has the opportunity to make comment publicly. They can ask any question. And therefore, this is the entire agreement for Mr. Williams' employment. It is not a contract. It is not a contract. It is not a violation of our city charter. And I want to thank our attorney and her staff for a job well done. Thank you. So. At this time.
Ma'am, before you move for a motion, and I'm, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned this. We did, in, in preparation for this, because there was a lot of concern for one council member that this did violate the charter, and there were concerns by other council members to get, to see what the norm was. We did reach out to TML, who reviewed our charter, who looked at some things and made some suggestions. But the International City Managers Association did provide a written statement.
Could you please read that?
And I have a copy for the council as well.
Will that also be shared online?
It can, yes, ma'am.
Please have it posted.
It says, "This memo is presented in response to requests for analysis to the viability, limitations, and role of an employment agreement for compensation of the city manager in the city of Boma, Texas. ICMA is a leading voice of local government management. With nearly 13,000 members worldwide who serve local governments under various forms of government, ICMA has found that employment agreements are a particularly useful instrument by which the elected body may hold the manager slash administrator accountable for performance and to protect the municipality as an employer. Additionally, an employment agreement provides transparency and public accountability to clarify the level of compensation provided to the manager slash administrator in performance of their duties. The first question that was raised is whether the elected body has the authority to enter into an employment agreement. One argument has been raised to right-to-work states such as Texas is whether contracts can be used at all. The Texas Workforce Commission provides clarity on this matter stating, "The basic rule of Texas employment law is employment at will, which applies to all phases of the employment relationship. It means that absent a statute or expressed agreement, such as an employment contract, to the contrary, either party in an employment relationship may modify any of the terms or conditions of employment or terminate the relationship altogether for any reason or no particular reason at all, with or without advanced notice," emphasis added. And so, "A performance agreement in certainty permissible under the right-to-work nature of the Texas employment law." The question then is whether there is a statute expressly prohibiting the city of Boma, Texas from any entry into an employment agreement. A home rule charter, the city of Boma, Texas, has the power of self-governance, and the city charter serves as a guiding document stipulating the powers and authority granted to the city and its agents. There is no prohibition in the, in the charter that denies the city council from entering into a contract or employment agreement of any other nature."
Ma'am, I, I have a question at that point right there. It says, "Entering into a contract or employment agreement." They're using those words syno- synonymously. They're saying the same thing. An employment agreement and a contract are the same thing. An employment agreement is a contract because you have an offer, an acceptance, and consideration. So I don't know how it can be said, said any different, that an employment agreement is not a contract.
Again, this is, this is in my opinion, this is just that of the ICMA, and I just wanted to read it.
But if you're going to rely on this, and we're going, you're going to rely on all of it. And they're using, and they're, they're using the words synonymously.
Please, let her finish.
Go ahead.
If you allow me to finish, and then we can talk about any questions I guess that are raised from it. It says, "The charter denies the city from entering into a contract or employment agreement of any nature. Therefore, the council may rely upon an employment agreement with the city manager, provided the agreement itself is in accordance with any provisions stipulated in the city charter. Specifically, the employment agreement serves as a mechanism that codifies a relationship consistent with the city charter. Upon thorough review of the city charter of the city of Boma, there are four specific limitations placed upon the authority of the city council with no employment agreement or contract may deny. The city manager need not be appointed via resident of the city of Boma, but during his tenure of office, he shall reside in Boma, Article 5, Section 1. No member of city council shall during the time of which he is elected be chosen as a city manager, Article 5, Section 1. The city manager shall not be appointed for a definite term, but may be removed at will and at the pleasure of the city council by a vote of a majority of the entire council, Article 5, Section 2. The city manager's powers and duties are affixed, and such specific duties articulated within an employment agreement must be consistent with section 3 of the city charter." Another question that has risen is whether the employment agreement may stipulate compensation for the manager in an event of termination. Again, the charter is guiding document on, on such issues. As noted in the opinion in the court case Haskell versus the city of Long Beach, New York, the Supreme Court of Nassau County, New York, ruled that the compensation for separation clause was illegal because the city charter did not grant such authority. Specifically, the court opinion notes that there is no provision in the city charter for employment of the city manager under a contract. As a city manager is a public officer, and the municipality is powerless to donate by agreement, deviate by agreement from the provisions of law governing the office. In that case, it was not the contract could not be used for clarity for the rules, responsibilities, and compensation, but rather the contract included provisions not allowable by the city charter. Specifically, in Long Beach, New York, there are no provisions allowing the city to provide compensation for termination. Yet, in the city of Boma, Texas, the city charter grants the city council full power and authority to provide compensation for employment and separation. Note that Article 5, Section 2 places only one limitation on the hiring of the city manager, that they may not be appointed for an indefinite term. The remainder of this section discusses separation and notes that the actions of the city council in suspending or removing the city manager shall be final, it being the intention of this charter to vest all authority and fix all responsibility of such separation or removal in the city council. The final clause of this section is that the city manager shall receive such compensation as may be affixed by the city council. And so the city charter expressly provides all authority and power to the city council to determine not only whether to suspend or remove the city manager, but also to determine any compensation. And so it is ICMA's view that an employment agreement is not only permissible, but beneficial to ensure accountability and transparency in the hiring of a city manager, provided the agreement is consistent with the limitations and requirements as stipulated in the charter. One must not stipulate a definite, definite term. Two should stipulate compensation, salary, benefits, and fringe. Three may include compensation for separation. The best practice is to distinguish whether separation is with or without cause. And four, require residency within the city limits. And five, duties stipulated must be consistent with and not beyond those stated in Article 5, Section 3.
Thank you. Councilmember Gibbs, you want to complete your comment?
Please. This was prepared by Jason Grant, Director of Advocacy. I presume he's a lawyer.
This was prepared by, this was presented by him, but it was prepared with injunction with their legal staff. And he is the communications director, so he would be there loren.
Okay, I got you. So there's been some criticism levied at some of the members of council for going outside of you, and I think somebody spoke to that today, and talking to an attorney. And I've never divulged what we talked about, so that's all speculation. But this is a situation where you yourself went and got another opinion, is that right?
Councilwoman, I, I was always firm on my belief, but I was requested to gather support. And I think in the legal community, you and I both know that it's always better to roundtable it. People can always see things better. Even you and I, when we were reviewing the contract, I missed some things you pointed out to me, so it's not uncommon. I, I would say I'm not offended that you got a second opinion. I don't, I don't take offense to that. I think that in this, in these situations, it was new. This wasn't something that I had done before, that our office had done before. And so I think it was my due diligence to seek as many opinions from both organizations like TML, ICMA, TCAA, all the organizations that we're a part of, that have been doing these things, have more, you know, have more action with these things in preparation for this.
And you certainly don't have a problem with other councilmembers doing their due diligence as well.
Absolutely not, I think that's your responsibility as well.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I have some questions, and we have a motion on the floor.
Okay. At this time.
I saw a move for approval of the resolution.
Call for a motion, I have a motion, and I have a second on the floor. All in favor, please?
Discussion.
Discussion, I'm sorry. Councilmember Neil?
Thank you. I have about four questions. So 3.7, on page 6, under the supplemental retirement plan. So let me back up on one thing. So his hire date for this contract is going to be September the 6th. And on the supplemental retirement plan, which is the deferred comp, the 457 plan, where we're going to give him $26,000 per year for that. My concern is, is that payment goes in typically sometime in September or early October. And per our last executive session, I thought the consensus of the council was is that that was going to be used for 2023, not 2022. So I wanted to bring that point up. That's fine, we can.
So I did reach out to Mr. Williams with that counter, his, to move it to FY '23, and he requested that it remain in FY '22, basically stating that he felt like the salary was low for the area based on the market and the comps that were around. And so again, it's in there as an item, but it's up to y'all.
All right, we'll bring that one back up.
I got a question in regards to the same component. When we say the salary was low... When we say the salary was low, like with this process, did we conduct a salary study through HR? How did we come up with our base $250,000 salary?
Okay, so, not my area, but I don't believe that a salary study was commenced that would have been done by HR. But when he mentioned that the salary was low for the area, I just pulled the comps from cities that we normally compare to, namely, the cities that I use, Waco, so on and so forth, the cities that we compare ourselves to generally, and look to see what their city managers are, for cities our size and just the makeup. I'll tell you that on average, the city compensation was between 260 to 280, so.
All right, awesome.
I'm sorry.
I want to address something that he had asked.
Can we let them address this? Okay.
He said he wanted that to be included for, when does fiscal year 23 start?
October 1st.
Of what year? 2022, correct?
I'm going to defer to our finance director. I believe the answer is yes.
Correct.
So, if he was to get this money this October, that is for fiscal year 2023 as we asked, correct?
Technically, yes.
That's all I hear.
Councilmember Gitts?
When we posted this job as being available, we posted the top salary as being 250. Nobody required anybody to submit an application for this job. It was posted at 250, is that correct?
It was.
Okay.
Councilmember Turner?
But just to piggyback, we posted 250 not based on a salary study. We just posted 250. That's what I just wanted to clarify. I think it's important that you actually look at what other cities are doing similar to our size and smaller, when you actually trying to attract a city manager that can do things that we are looking for our city to do. So, that's why I wanted to ask, did we do a salary study prior to posting that salary?
We did not. To my knowledge, we did not.
Thank you. Councilmember Neil?
All right, on page six, again, under 3.9, under the vehicle allowance. I'm fine with all that. The only other thing I would like to add in there is if we could add a clause in there that the insurance will meet or exceed state requirements. The 30-60-25 coverage is subject to change.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, Councilmember Neil?
The 3.9, the vehicle allowance, where it talks about the insurance, so we give him $10,000 a year for a car allowance. And then, with that money, he has to provide 30-60-25 insurance coverage. And in the event that that changes, I would like a clause in there that his insurance will meet or exceed state requirements.
So, just to get the language proper, we can say, or meet or exceed state requirements, or I can say at all times, the coverage shall meet or exceed.
Yeah, if you had that in there, you could take the 30-60-20 out. 30-60-25, sorry.
I think it's put in more for like a base, so that, you know, that it shows like the minimum. Obviously, I guess my question is, are you wanting him to have beyond the minimum?
No, I just want to make sure he at least meets the minimum.
So, if the minimums go up, it'll, his coverage should go up.
That's correct.
So, we can add the language of that, "At all times, coverage shall meet state minimums."
Right.
I don't believe that that's a substantial change.
Okay. All right, I got one last little area. So, on page eight, let's see here, 6.1, under the termination clause.
What page are you on?
Page eight.
Okay.
So, it defines, it defines what good cause is. It defines that if you fire somebody for good cause, kind of the steps you got to go through. So, I wanted to walk through this. If you look at 6.3, y'all changed on me a little bit, hang on. If you go to good cause termination under Class 1 causes, let me find it here, there's three things that you got to do. The majority of the entire council has to vote to pursue a termination for cause. Number two, the effective date of the termination for cause has to be established. And number three, the city's commitment to pay the value of all current obligations, severance amount, and the city's commitment to fulfill its obligations of severance benefits. So, then, it takes you down to the severance benefits, and there's three on that as well. The amount equal to the value of the manager's then-current yearly salary, B, the value of any current obligations computed on an hourly basis, and that hourly basis, by the way, is $120 an hour if you take the current salary, which is 250 divided by the 2080. And then, C is continued health insurance.
It's continued health insurance.
Okay. So, this is where I struggle a little bit more. So, if you go back to page nine and go to the Class 1 causes, and all of these right here, if we terminate him for these following 10 items, we got to pay him a severance package. So, and it's important that we go through these. A, failure to fulfill the city manager's duties as required in this agreement, city charter, or city code ordinances. If he fails to do that, and we fire him, we got to pay him a severance package. B, incompetence or inefficiency in the performance of the city manager's duties as documented by evaluations, supplemental, or written communication from the council, with council being the entire board and not as individuals. So, if this guy is incompetent and we fire him, we got to pay a severance package. C, failure to comply with applicable laws and authorities. If he fails to comply with applicable laws and authorities and we fire him, we got to pay a severance package. D, neglect of duties. You got to pay him a severance package. Falsifying records or documents related to the city's activities and/or misrepresenting material facts to the council or other city officials in the conduct of the city's business. If he misrepresents something knowingly to this council and we fire him, you got to give him a severance package. We removed engaging in a romantic or sexual relationship with a subordinate just a minute ago. I, violation of the ICMA/TCMA Code of Ethics. The ICMA, by the way, is the reference letter that we just received. J, any other reason constituting good cause under established Texas law. So, basically, anything you fire this guy for, even if it's something illegal, you got to pay him a termination clause. If you go back to the first page, it starts where all the where is stuff is, and I'm going to read just one. "The manager believed that an employment agreement negotiated between the council on behalf of the city and the manager can mutually beneficial to the city, the manager, and the community they serve." I don't see how any of those clauses in there are beneficial to anybody except Mr. Williams.
So, I did reach out to Mr. Williams. Again, this was brought to my attention by Mr. Gitts, and I did reach out to him, and what he said was is that a lot of these things can be subjective, and so, the severance is meant to, again, both protect the council and himself, but a lot of, a lot of the things, we did, like he said, did remove the sexual subordinate to the class two, which is something I originally thought we did. But he said, you know, that's essentially the general one. But essentially, you know, we have a charter that requires that the capital program be produced at a certain time, and if it's not produced, it's in violation of, you know, the charter, so that would be failing to provide compliant applicable laws. I think sometimes when we give reports, we may not have all the facts. If he misrepresents something unintentionally, that could be misrepresenting to council. I can tell you, yes, we've definitely done a salary study and then come out and say, no, we didn't do a salary study. That wouldn't be me intentionally lying to you, but I would have mistakenly gave council false information. You can also, same thing on the document. The manager is responsible for signing documents on, for just about executing documents on just about everything in the council, so we rely on, you know, when I review a document, I rely on the expertise of the individuals that prepared it. The manager relies on my authority to say that it's legal and sound, but there could be some things in there that may have been not true.
And under, and I may have missed it because the changes we've made to this is, of course...
Substantial.
Yes. And let me, let me just say this upfront to the citizens and remind the council so everyone can appreciate the moment. The first agreement that we received was Tuesday, an executive session. The second agreement was Friday in our packet. The third agreement was yesterday at 5:15 by email, and the fourth agreement was put in front of us when we sat down at this dais. And the changes that we've gone through...
Counsel, I don't want to interrupt you, but the one, the document that you received on Tuesday wasn't an agreement, it was just terms and conditions.
Yes.
See, easy to mistake.
Yes. And so, the request, the proposal that Mr. Williams was asking of us to consider was given to us on Tuesday. The official agreement was on Friday. The second official agreement was yesterday at 5:15, and the third official agreement was today as we sat at the dais. And as the city attorney mentioned, the changes have been substantial, some cosmetic, some is substantial. And we're expected to assimilate this information and vote on it here in just a moment. I'm not sure that any businessman or woman in this room would recommend that you enter into any type of a legal agreement without further study and review. The other thing I'm just concerned about is that typically, these type of things are posted so our citizens can review it, and they can make comments on what we as a council who represents you are getting ready to vote. I would contend that there's no one in this room that really knows what this document is that I'm getting ready to vote on. And I'm just making a statement that I personally, this is a concern to me. It may not concern any other councilmembers, but I'm just concerned about the manner in which this is being done. And I understand we're all anxious to get a new city manager, I do. But let me just remind all of us that the first interview that we had with the three candidates was on June the 22nd. Between the 22nd and now is seven weeks. During that seven weeks, we had three weeks where we could not meet. One was July 4th, one there were sickness, and then the third one, we were not able to hold an executive session. So, technically, we've had four weeks to really consider this. And personally, I believe, as I, I think all the councilmembers believe, that this probably will be the most important decision that we will ever make while sitting on council. I know Councilman Samuel, you've only done this in 30-something years. You've only had this four times. I mean, so, it's, and he's been here, as I said, for a while. So, this is a serious decision, and to sit here and to try to assimilate this, of course, for me personally is concern. But back to our attorney. If he violates, or if we terminate him again for one of these causes in Class 1, then I understand the severance package has to be paid out.
Yes, sir.
Okay. If we terminate him for Class 2, the severance package is not paid out, correct?
That's correct.
But current obligations are.
Yeah, and that would be, current obligations would be his last paycheck and any accrued PTO.
And that's, that one there is...
It's consistent with city policy.
It's consistent with our employee handbook.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I would like to point out, even though there's been several changes, most and majority of the changes were to be inconsistent with the city policy. Most of the changes, if not all of the changes, minus the cosmetic where I just changed some typos and whatever, but the majority of the changes were to become in compliance with the city policy, so those essentially are in favor of the city, and Mr. Williams was aware of that. I will say that council has amended contracts at the dais before where they've asked for things to be amended, so this isn't a unusual practice. I think that the amount of changes were slightly overwhelming because it is a longer agreement, but traditionally, we do like to post a final. I got this in my office very late, but I wanted it to be available to council as soon as possible because it was asked to be put on the agenda. There was a way that I could have put it on the agenda and just kind of gave you all these changes the last minute, but I thought it was important for the agreement to be posted and to be viewed by citizens. I would like to point out again that the changes that were made were made to reflect city policy, so that was eliminating some, you know, reference to compensatory time and how it was accumulated and reviewed and stuff like that, and how time essentially was calculated by the city. And so, I definitely want to point that out, that it isn't meant to kind of bamboozle the council. I wanted to make sure that y'all had it in mind.
And I do yield the fact that we do this sometimes, dealing with asphalt and water lines and sewer lines, but in dealing with the employment of the city manager, for me, this rises to a new level, and that's the only reason that I mentioned it.
Yes, sir.
And I do appreciate our city attorney. She's been very, very helpful, and just over the last three days, I've called her three times over the weekend, and she took my call every time and spent significant time with me on the phone to answer all of my questions as a councilmember, as I'm trying to wrap my mind around this and what's best for the citizens of Boma. I yield back, Mayor.
So, Councilmember Felshaw, you're saying that all of your questions were answered, and everything you need to make your decision has been satisfied by the city attorney responding to your questions, correct?
Up to this agreement, I was satisfied in what I had asked her. But if you're asking me if I've comprehended all of these changes here in this moment, I have to say, no, I haven't.
Well, counsel, I want to point out that outside of the changes that we, as in the email on Friday, the only ones that really changed was the travel allowance, and then the changes to 6.1, where we moved some things around and changed the wording. Those are the only changes that were, that were not included in your email on Friday.
Let me rephrase the word comprehended. Let me use the word assimilate. To assimilate all of these changes and to look at each one, it's a lot, and I think we all, we all understand that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Samuel?
I have attempted to just listen to my colleagues, and we were elected to make decisions based on information provided to us, evaluation of that information, and then we were, we are to make decisions. I understand your caution and want to make sure you get it right. This is not the first council that's done that. As I stated, I think I've been through at least four. Most times in previous situations, once we find, we feel are good candidates, and we've determined to be the best candidate, they move forward with an assumption that they will be good for the city and make attempts to do those things of which, in the best interest of the citizens of our city. This time, this is the first time, I've heard so many, even though they found him to be quite competent, and found him to be experienced, and found him to be a good candidate, we tend to look and make the assumption of the worst as opposed to being the best. That is what gives me concern. And the message that we send to the people, the citizens, we are to be looking at the qualifications, the experience, and making the decision as to what candidate we feel at this time would be the best candidate to move us forward. But for us to, we're, let me ask our city attorney, other previous city managers, we've not had a resolution or an agreement to be this detailed, correct?
So, I couldn't find Kyle's original resolution. I just found the last one. And so, just on, just when you guys appointed me, mine wasn't that long, but it did outline what my base salary would be, what my administrative allowance would be, and what my ICMA contribution and auto allowance would be. And then, it ends with that same language, and all other benefits and compensations is allowed.
And that was what encompassed the agreement?
Correct. But I will tell you that as a city attorney, I have a, a part of my budget, there's travel, subscriptions, there's, you know, training, all of that is allotted in my budget.
Okay. And that has pretty much been allowed in previous contracts, or previous agreements?
Previous resolutions, yes, sir.
I think I made myself quite clear.
Thank you. Councilmember Gitts, and then Councilmember Doria.
There's a big difference between putting something in a resolution that encompasses the various terms of compensation. that encompasses the various terms of compensation and benefits versus a contract of employment. And that's what this is. It is a contract of employment. I don't care if you call it an employment agreement or employment contract. It's the same thing. Even ICMA recognizes that as they use the words synonymously in their letter. The problem that I have had with this all along is, and you know, there's a lot of people out in the audience that are mumbling and murmuring and, you know, it's very disrespectful. So, okay?
One moment, please.
So the problem I have had with this all along, and I've been very vocal about it, is the severance agreement. The New York case that was referenced in the IMCMA letter has the same or very similar circumstances. And that case says that doing this is illegal. Okay. Let's just take that off the shelf for a minute. Because two different lawyers can come to two different conclusions as to whether something is legal or not. Two different judges can come to different conclusions of whether something is legal or not. So that can be fought in a court of law. That's what courts are here for. Take that away. Linking these terms of termination, these good cause terms of termination, to payment of a severance package is just a horrible idea for the city of Beaumont. It is not in the best interest of the city of Beaumont to have this done. I am not saying this would happen, and I don't think that it would happen. I would certainly hope it wouldn't happen. But literally, under this employment contract, Mr. Williams can stop coming to work. He can stop coming to work and we would have to fire him. And we would have to pay him, okay? He could, he could, and I'm not saying he would, but he could falsify records or documents related to the city's activities. That's not subjective. That's subjective. If you're falsifying records, you know what you're doing. And we would have to fire him if that came to light, but then turn around and pay him. When I called you shortly before the meeting and asked you, please tell me I'm wrong about this, I, I wanted to make sure, I was hoping I was wrong. But you said, no, councilman, you're right. And, and when I asked you about this, you mean to tell me he can have a romantic relationship with a subordinate? And we would have to fire him and he would still be paid? And you, you were shocked at that. You, you know, you said, yes, councilman. And obviously what you did at that point was you called Mr. Williams and said, you mind if I move that to class two? So, and you did that, thank you. But that's how overreaching this thing is.
Well, but Councilmember Gitz, she acknowledged that also.
And I, and I just thanked her for doing it, too.
Thank you.
We are, we as council members are supposed to be looking out for the best interests of the citizens of Beaumont, not for the best interest of Kenneth Williams. If he had a problem with the compensation level of $250,000, he had already retired from the city of Buta. He didn't have to come here and then start it there and start negotiating from that point. I mean, at one point he wanted 275, uh, you, you know, and our job is not to negotiate the best contract for Kenneth Williams. It's to negotiate the best contract for the citizens of Beaumont. This is not it. I will not support it.
Thank you. Councilmember Durya, excuse us.
Yeah, I, with all this said about Mr. Williams, I want to tell y'all a few things about Mr. Williams. And a few things about stuff y'all may have heard online. Misinformation. Number one, no three-year contract. That's, that's just not true. No $300,000 a year base salary. That's not true. The $250,000 salary that we're offering him is like the lowest in the state for a city outside. I'm gonna read it to you here. Um, when Kyle Hayes left, his salary was 245,208 dollars a year. We had a, a population of 115,000. Waco, Texas has a population, this, this, these numbers are from the 2020 census, population of 143,286 dollars. The city manager's salary is 272,000 a year. They have four assistant city managers. Beaumont has none. Tyler, Texas, population of 105,000, city manager's salary is 290,000 dollars a year. They have two assistant city managers. San Marcos, Texas, population half our size, 67,000 people. City manager's salary is 273,000 dollars a year. They have two assistant city managers. Temple, Texas, population of 85,000, city manager's salary is 285,000 dollars. They have two assistant city managers. I'll read that to you guys to say, we want to be competitive. In order to get good people to come to work to Beaumont, we want to be competitive. I want the best for Beaumont. I want the best people that we can get. My selection for Mr. Williams is because he was the best applicant. Really, no disrespect to Mr. Boone, really didn't have anything to do with it. I was charged with doing these interviews, all the, and we, we got 17 resumes and video interviews to do before we narrowed it down to three. And I did all of them. And, and come up with the best candidates. And that is exactly what I did. Beaumont deserves the best. Sometimes we said no severance package, that's too much money. To me, y'all were saying Beaumont is not good enough to have a good city manager. We don't want to have, we don't need to offer them all of that. We just settle. Just take whatever, because it's just Beaumont, Texas. That's not what I'm saying. I got this job because I love Beaumont, Texas, and Beaumont, Texas deserves the best. And I'm gonna do what's best. What the folks elected me to do was to make these decisions using information I'm given by staff, like the information that, uh, Ms. Reed gave, Mrs. Reed gave us, you know, how she advised us. Couple of other things I want to tell, uh, about him, what he did in the city of Buta. He doubled their population. He, uh, they had a downtown similar to ours, a lot of vacant buildings. He filled those vacant buildings, brought an Amazon distribution center to Buta, Texas. Okay? Beaumont, it, it, they deserved the best. We were elected for a change, and that's what this is about. Mr. Williams has been the president of the Texas City Managers Association, on the board for the International City Managers Association. I mean, he's, he would not come here and ruin his good name and reputation to get a severance package when he could just do a good job and keep getting his paycheck every year. You know? We, we're, this, we're arguing, basically, we're arguing about an insurance policy. That's what a severance package is. In case something bad happened or, and even Mr. Williams stated, I have done my research on Beaumont, Texas. I know Beaumont is politically volatile. I saw what happened to the school board in Beaumont. I have to take, and, and you know, you cannot get on a man for wanting to protect himself and his family. You can't blame him for that. You can't blame a man for wanting to come here and get the best deal for him. Anybody around here, if you're gonna try to get a good, uh, a job, you're gonna try to get the best deal for you. There's, there's nothing wrong with that. It's not making him a bad person. And all of this stuff that they're saying about him, if you don't know him and if you've never met him, you would think, oh, this guy is a criminal, we don't want him. I said, instead of Mr. Williams being interviewed, he was being interrogated. And it was awful.
Excuse us, please. Could you hold your comments, please?
He was head and shoulders above all the other candidates. That's, that's just it. And you know what? About a month ago, we had about a 6-1 vote for this thing when we first started. Everybody loved him. Then they started looking for reason, they started, uh, trying to find dirt on him. Baker Tilly, we paid them 24,000.
Twenty-five.
$25,000. That was the firm that searched for our city managers. They brought us all those applicants. And they said, all the applicants they brought us are all-stars, or else they wouldn't have brought them to us. They brought, they brought them, and if there was any dirt on them, they would have found it. They didn't, and they didn't present it to us. So it's, it's, it's nothing underhanded about choosing Mr. Williams, nothing illegal as per our, uh, city attorney, which according to the charter, we're supposed to follow her advice, which that, that is what we doing. That is what I'm doing. I've never hired a city manager before. I've been involved in hiring, uh, firemen before, but I never hired a city manager. This, this is a very important, uh, deal. Just hold on because I had to write notes, because it's, it's just a lot that I like about here, Mr. Williams. Since I've been on council, we've worked very good before. I think the mayor has done a great job of not having a divisive council. He brought this council together. This issue here is, it's like it's dividing it and everything, we were starting all over again, and I don't want it to be like that. We're doing what was in, uh, uh, according to the charter. He was the best applicant. He's passed every test that we've thrown on him, at him. He's negotiated in good faith. He's bent over backwards. Just about everything, we, we were sending, um, these agreement back and forth. Just about everything we told him no, he said, okay. He said, okay. You know? And so it, it is almost like we was trying to get him to say, you know what? I've had enough. Take my name out the hat. And he, and he hadn't. He said when he, he retired, and they wanted to know, why did you retire in, in, um, March? And then in July, I put your name in the hat to be hired again. You know what I wanted to say? You ever heard Tom Brady? He did the same thing. He retired, two months later, yeah, I'm tired of being retired, I'm ready to go back to work. I got other things, you know, he had, he still, he still has stuff left that he could do. Mr. Williams is the same thing. I don't know, you know, some people would consider him to be a goat, a greater for all time as far as city manager. Some people would say you could compare him to a Tom Brady as far as all of his accomplishments, you know? And every person that I've talked to, I've got phone calls from Austin, Buta. We have people that actually worked for the city of Beaumont that knew, that were from Austin and knew him from there. Everybody was saying how lucky we are to have somebody like that want to apply and come to work in Beaumont. You know? I'm, I'm ready for him to, um, open that, uh, Amazon distribution center. I'm, I'm ready for it, you know? I think that is all that I have to say. Mr., Mr. Williams is the best. He's the most qualified candidate. Uh, I've even been asked, why don't you like Chris? I do like Mr. Boone. But I was elected to make what I feel is the best decision for hiring a city manager. And I feel that it's Mr. Williams, head and shoulders. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Durya. Councilmember Gitz.
Never once has anybody heard me disparage Kenneth Williams. It's never been about the man. It's never been about the job he's done. It's been about this contract. It's been about this severance package. If another candidate was coming before us and they happened to be white instead of black, and they came before us wanting the same sort of severance language in there, I would have objected to it just as vehemently as I am now. And let me go further than that, because I heard one citizen say something about a racial animus about this. I contacted Mr. Williams. I contacted Mr. Williams with the city attorney and Councilman Turner in the room. Okay? And I asked him, and I told him, you know, I think you have some good things you can offer to Beaumont. I said, we want economic development in Beaumont. I said, we want to diversify our economy in Beaumont. But Mr. Williams, you're including a severance package in there that gives me concern. It may be illegal because there's a court case that says it is. But even if you put that aside, for all the reasons we've already discussed today, I think it's a bad deal where you could potentially come in here and do these things, force us to have to fire you, and then we would have to pay you. I asked him to take the severance package out. I asked him to take the severance package out. And I told him that if he were to do that, I would vote for him. And I bet everybody else on council would vote for him, too. And he could come here with a 7-0 vote, and we could go forth, and a direct quote I said was, "We can go forth and make Beaumont a great city." That's what I said to him. Now, to me, that laid it all out there. And that takes away any racial argument that anybody wants to make. Okay? But his response was, no, I want that severance package in there. And that gives me concern. It gives me concern. And I'm not going to support it, as I said earlier.
Mr. Gitz, but tell, tell, tell them, uh, he said he would not take it out, but tell them why he said he wouldn't take it out.
I don't care why he wouldn't take it out.
No, 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 no. Tell them why. You, you've told the.
You can, you can tell.
Hold up. One moment, audience, please, one moment. Hold on, one moment. You've told the whole scenario of your phone call to Mr. Williams.
That's right.
But tell them why he responded to you with the answer, no.
If you want to, were you in the room?
No, I was not in the room.
Okay, then you can have somebody else respond.
One moment, one moment, please, audience, please, please. So you don't want to give his whole response?
If somebody else wants to amplify what I said, the city attorney and Councilman Turner were in the room, they can say whatever they want to say. But I'm telling you, it doesn't matter at this point. He wouldn't take it out, and it causes a problem for me.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Council, Councilmember Turner. Councilmember Turner, Councilmember Duryo, then Councilmember Samuel.
But, yeah, I think, I think, I'm, I'm actually gonna yield, I'm gonna yield.
Okay. One moment, please. I need, could you please yield to the city attorney?
Yeah.
You're gonna wait? Okay, go ahead.
The reality is, when you negotiate, negotiations bounce and it goes both ways. And one thing that's unfortunate, and I do agree with Councilman Duryo, we have negotiated. I myself have went above and beyond to try to negotiate in the best face to please even the people opposed to the contract. When you ask someone to take something out, take something out, take something out, at some point, when are you gonna offer something back? That's good fair negotiations, in my opinion. I did sit on the call with attorney and it did happen. But the reality is, it's got to this point because we're pulling, 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 and we're not offering back. And I don't think there's fair negotiations, in my opinion. So the only way we can get to a point if we're gonna do fair negotiations, all negotiations, they bounce back and forth and they have to go both ways. So understand, I have went above and beyond to try my best to be the mediator and work with both sides. But the reality is, in negotiations, it has to be give on both ends. It can't be all one way.
Councilmember Durya.
Y'all all heard, just heard me speak. One thing you did not hear me say, I did not bring up anyone's skin color. I did not say black, white, and I never do. But we do get that on council. I've heard people say, we gotta be careful because this is gonna turn into black and white. I'm like, no, it's not, not for me. I've not made one decision based on skin color since I've been on this council. I base my decisions on what is best for the city, citizens of Beaumont. And why, I mean, sometime I wish when they, when they put the, they wouldn't have put none of their pictures on Facebook. So you could just, or we didn't, we didn't get to see them, just go by their accomplishments. You know? I, I, I mean, I thought my city of Beaumont was past that. But I was mistaken. But I'm, I'm, I'm gonna continue to work like that. I'm gonna, I'm gonna continue to be colorblind. That's, that's, that's what I'm gonna do.
So I, I would, and I'm sorry to interrupt, but I want to point out that I didn't draft the contract or draft the agreement, whatever we want to call it. I, I merely just made the changes that I thought, um, were necessary. Councilman Gitz, I did ask that some of the, the, we amend clause one, clauses that Mr. Williams was not amenable. He said that was, in his opinion, the purpose of the severance was to protect him from being terminated. the purpose of the severance was to protect him from being terminated, just at a whim. And so that's, he wanted to leave it in, but he did agree to move Section H to Class Two and make some other, take out the knowingly would require him a higher, a higher cause. So it's just, it's just blatant at this point. But I did try to, in my opinion, negotiate what I, or negotiate what I felt like was the best agreement on behalf of the city. In other news, I passed out a resolution from 2002 where a previous city manager did get a four-month severance. Sorry that this is late in the game, but sometimes we had to go way, way back. Thank you to the people who assisted with this, our city clerk's office. But this just shows that there is a precedence for it. It's not new to the city. We did offer a four-month severance in 2002 under Evelyn Lord for the resignation of the city manager at that time.
Thank you. One moment. Councilmember Samuel, Councilmember Felschaw, then Councilmember Getz.
Thank you, Mayor. Two things. One, to address Mr. Pariji, I appreciate your comments, and I appreciate what you've done and your family in the city of Beaumont. And I know you love Beaumont. The only thing I'm gonna address is, we discussed it. I told you where I stood. You told me where you stood. I did tell you that I had spoke, I told you why I did not support Chris. And I've also talked to Chris about why I did not, I mean, Mr. Boone, about why I did not. So that's not something that was undercover talk. I've been straightforward with you, and I respect you in being straightforward with me. Now, I've sat here, and I've tried not to do things that I would ordinarily do because I did not want to come across as being personal or petty. But we've been here for over two hours. And I did not call for a point of order when Councilmember Getz just began to broadcast why he's saying the things that he's saying. It has nothing to do with the motion that is on the floor. There is a motion on the floor. But I tried to be patient and considerate and professional. But I think enough is enough. Asking for more time is kicking us down the road, trying to find another reason to come back and deny. I'm trying to be a good colleague. But, you know, one of the judges reminded me yesterday of a great coach. That coach was Alex Durley. And he says, sometimes we make cakes. It's about the ingredients that we put into the cakes. Sometimes we have chocolate cakes. Sometimes we have vanilla cakes. But it's the ingredients that go in. This is the ingredients. We can be good stewards. We can help move Beaumont forward. Or we can be a reason that we put the brakes on what's happening good in Beaumont by fighting. I'm trying to be a good teammate. And I hope that we don't have to continue to waste time, energy, and emotions playing games.
Councilman Felschaw.
I just want to make it very clear that my concerns about this motion that is on the floor is simply the severance package that's connected to the Cause One payout. That is of great concern to me, that we could end up paying out over a quarter million dollars for what we all would agree would be bad behavior. Now, do I think that Mr. Williams would ever do that? No. But I do struggle with attaching a severance package to Cause One behavior requiring the city to pay out. My issue, as with the others, or not with Mr. Williams, I've talked to him more than once. He seems like a very gracious man. I just think it's unfortunate that our city is strapped with this type of an agreement. And I was here to represent the citizens and to try to find the best agreement for you. And I personally don't feel that a man that could, any manager, any, any manager, male, female, any manager, could commit one of these offenses as listed and would still receive that type of a payout. And with that said, Mayor, I'll call for the question.
Councilmember Neil.
Thank you, Mayor. So the only other request I have, so nobody has, nobody has a copy of the agreement that has all the words in it, including what we did today. Is there, is it possible for us to get all that done so we can, everybody can have a copy of that before we leave today?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we have all the wording right, so we don't have to vote on this thing one time. Because I know a lot of things changed.
That's our Councilmember Neil.
Yeah, and I just want, you know, I want to say, you know, the great thing about, about this council is, is that at the end of the day, everybody has the right to their own choice, like Mr. Pariji said. And if, if we're gonna let disagreements divide us, then that's, that's pretty low. But just because somebody votes different than me doesn't mean I hate them for their, who they are and their decision. I've had in-depth conversations with Councilmember Turner and Councilmember Durio over, over the last year over this exact matter. Vote, vote your feelings. Vote your conscience. And just because I disagree with you on it, doesn't mean I hate you. And I respect the same thing. I mean, everybody has the right to their own votes.
Thank you.
I agree, Mayor.
I do agree, Councilman. I, I don't hate the player. I just hate the game.
I agree.
Councilmember Durio.
I'd have to agree with Councilman Neil. One good thing about this, this council, we vote and we disagree, and we move on. We may have raised voices for a minute in executive session. Next thing you know, we all laughing. I've actually seen Councilman Getz and Councilman Samuel hug each other.
True, true.
I call for the motion.
Let me, let me get Councilmember Getz, and I do have a comment. I haven't made one, so I do have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I also agree with Councilmember Neil. You can disagree without being disagreeable. And, you know, that's apparently what we have here today. And so if we have a split vote on this, so be it. Mr. Williams comes in, I hope he does great things for the city of Beaumont. I hope we never have to exercise any of these good cause provisions to vote to terminate him. I would, I hope we'd never have to give him a severance agreement. You know, I'd hope that, you know, when he comes here, he works until he's ready to go, and then he just resigns and goes on and does what he wants to do with the rest of his life. But my concern is the same thing that Councilmember Felschaw said. I cannot support that language. That's the only thing I've ever said that I really have a problem with in this package. I had a problem with the comp time too, but that was taken out. Thank you. There were some other things that was in there that was adjusted. Thank you. But the severance, for whatever reason, he wants it in there. And to me, you know, the right thing to do would be, I understand, I understand that you want to have protection about maybe perhaps a new council gets elected in, in May of '23, and maybe they, they just don't jive, and they want to replace him for, you know, just because they want to replace him. I understand the need to have protection in that circumstance. But I don't understand the need to have protection when you falsify records or give bad information or failure to comply with your duties. I don't understand why you would have to have a severance agreement in that circumstance. So that's me.
Councilmember Turner.
I think one thing we haven't done today is acknowledge all the work that our city attorney did throughout this whole process. The reality is, she has got extreme amount of calls from the opposing side as well as the supportive side. She's even sat in meetings and attempted to mediate between both parties. And I think the reality is, we haven't acknowledged the work that our city attorney has done. And even prior to this vote, I do want to thank Chris Boone, his interim. I got a high level of respect for you, brother. I do. I just wanted to say that publicly, all right?
Okay, I'm gonna call for the vote in just a minute. But one thing I would like to say is, Mr. Pariji, I got a phone call from Mr. Pariji. I also told him that I would not be supporting Mr. Boone. But I don't throw the rock and have my hand. I never have, and I never will. If my daddy told me, what did you do, even if I got in trouble, I stood up to it. And I always will. Because I believe you're only as good as your word. And I went to Chris, and I said, Chris, it's not that you're good, you're not a good person. I just don't feel that it is the time for you right now for this job. And I said, I wanted it to come from me, because I didn't want you to hear it from anyone else. And he thanked me for that. And I want to thank you right here in front of everybody, on camera, whether media, the citizens that are not here can say thank you for the job that you've done. It take a lot to come and sit in here, to know that someone else is gonna be voted on for a job that you stepped in and you manned and held the wheel for us. Thank you so very much. Thank you. I also want to say, as I said before, to our attorney, if you think she had a lot of long nights, Sundays, Saturdays, and weekends, one night, we didn't get out of here till almost nine o'clock. And they can all tell you, I say, I checked the clock. It's, it's time. Because after you've said it over and over and over and over, you start to repeat yourself. And at some point, someone has to take control and say, we are repeating ourselves, and it is time to move forward. And I took that step as mayor in the last executive meeting that we had, because it was time to move forward and to move on. Another comment I want to make is, when that conversation took place with the city attorney, with Mr. Getz, with Mr. Turner, Mr. Williams was asked to remove the severance. He said he would not remove it because he wanted to freely come in and do his job with not having to worry about being fired if he removed someone from their job or made changes to the city that was needed for his protection. And again, as Councilmember Durio said, if you're looking for a job and you're negotiating a job for yourself, you're not gonna say, yeah, just pay me $5.76 an hour like I make right now. You're not gonna go in and accept whatever someone offered you. You're gonna negotiate the best for yourself and for your family. And this is all this man has done. And also, he has worked 15 years as a city manager. Do you think he's gonna jeopardize his name, his integrity, to come to Beaumont and not do what is right? So at this time and this point, I am calling for the vote.
Mayor, may I amend my motion to-
Yes, sir.
I move that we accept the resolution as amended.
And may I have a second on that? I have a motion to the amended, original motion. And I have a second. All in favor, please signify. And I'm gonna ask for a record vote. Please show your hands.
I think when we do record vote, the clerk calls the names.
Right, yes.
Mayor Muton?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Durio?
Yes.
Councilmember Getz?
No.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Felschaw?
No.
Councilmember Samuel?
Yes.
And Councilmember Neil?
No.
Thank you. The motion carry for three. Thank you. We have a new city manager. Okay, we're gonna move on to item number two, please. May I have the reading?
Mayor and council, item number two is an ordinance entitled an ordinance issuing an amended specific use permit to allow the construction of a school expansion in an RMH residential multifamily dwelling, highest density district located at 7720 Park North Drive in the city of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. Hugh and Bob Hope School is requesting an extension for the amended specific use permit issued in July of 2018 to allow the expansion of a school on the south side of Park North Drive. The city of Beaumont zoning ordinance states that unless construction is commenced and substantially underway within a two-year period, the specific use permit shall become null and void. However, extensions of time for good cause may be approved by the city council, which is why it's back before you today. Back in July of 2018, council did approve this specific use permit with the following conditions. Number one, meet all drainage district number six drainage requirements. Sidewalk must be provided along Park Drive North. Number three, landscaping must be provided to meet an ordinance's requirements for parking areas and buffers. Dumpster must be screened completely from the street with fencing and landscaping and located at a minimum of 25 feet from the adjacent properties. Number five, ensure all portable buildings will be accessible via ADA guidelines from the parking lot, drop-off area. And finally, number six, modular buildings must meet all city of Beaumont building code requirements. Again, the applicant is requesting this extension due to delays due to COVID-19 as well as funding issues. The administration is recommending approval with the same six conditions.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number two. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve with conditions.
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor in the discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, the motion carries. May I have the reading of item number three, please?
Yes, ma'am. Item number three is to consider a resolution receiving the proposed FY 2023 budget and scheduling a public hearing. Article Six, Section Two of the city charter requires that the proposed budget be submitted to the council at least 45 days prior to the beginning of the new fiscal year. In addition, Section Four requires council to schedule a public hearing on the proposed budget. The administration recommends that a public hearing be held on August 23, 2022 at 1:30 PM in council chambers of City Hall. The administration recommends the following.
Thank you. Councilmember Samuel stepped out for a moment before I called for the vote. Yeah, I'm gonna wait so that he could vote.
That's, in the meantime, Mayor, real quickly, if I could, I would just point out, again, we're just asking y'all to acknowledge the receipt of the budget and call for that public hearing. One thing I'll also point out is we are planning to have a work session on the budget next week. In addition, I would encourage you, if you have any questions about the budget, specifically the tax rate that we are at, we'll probably ask y'all to set next week, I would encourage you to reach out to probably Todd Semino, our CFO. The legislature has changed the laws about how that's set recently. It is a complicated formula that our CFO and the budget staff has to calculate in order to set that tax rate. But I would encourage y'all to reach out to him directly, and maybe between now and next week, if you have any questions about it.
And if I could clarify, just to make sure, we're setting the proposed tax rate next week. You won't approve a tax rate till September.
Yeah, just to follow up on that, as, as, as Mr. Semino mentions, we have to set it in order to advertise it so that we can move the process forward. But you're not, you're not, you're not stuck with that next week. But we are asking you to set it.
Mr. Manager, prior to looking at the budget, I requested- Mr. Manager, prior to looking at the budget, I requested on last week, and I do appreciate you responded to me today. I requested that we see a salary study to look at our minimums and see in comparison to where we are with other cities. Honestly, I don't feel comfortable moving forward if we are, if not, if we're not in competitive rates or have a plan to get to competitive rates. So I just wanna make sure it's understood that I am looking still to receive that salary study, so I can actually compare what our minimums are compared to other cities similar to our size.
Yeah, yes, sir. And so, our HR department, as well as our finance group, we are going to address that in the work session next week to talk about, you know, kind of our lowest, essentially our lowest paid employees, you know, what does, what does that look like? And so, how that might impact the budget. But we will, we will be discussing that next week.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. So, Councilmember Samuel, I held the vote until you got back. We are on item number three. The resolution receiving the proposed 2023 budget and scheduling the public hearing.
Thank you.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Have a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number four, please?
Yes, ma'am. Item number four is a resolution receiving the proposed 2023 capital program and scheduling a public hearing. The proposed 2023 capital program was originally submitted to council on May 10th, 2022. Article six, section 20 of the city charter requires council to schedule a public hearing on the proposed capital program. The administration is recommending that a public hearing be held August 23rd, 2022, at 1:30 PM in the council chambers of City Hall.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number four. May I have a motion?
So move for approval.
May I have a second? Have a motion and a second on the floor in a discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number five, please?
Item number five is an ordinance entitled an ordinance adopting a new reapportionment plan, thereby revising city council member ward boundaries in response to the 2020 census, providing for findings of fact, providing this ordinance be cumulative, providing for severability, providing for governmental immunity, providing for injunctions. As a result of the 2020 decennial census, it's been determined that a decrease in population in the city of Beaumont has caused the existing ward boundaries of the city of Beaumont to be substantially unequal in population. Article one, section six of this charter of the city of Beaumont gives to the city council the responsibility of changing ward boundaries from time to time as the council may deem expedient, so that each ward shall contain as nearly as possible the same number of electors. The proposed ordinance adjusts the ward boundaries to comply with the charter of city Beaumont. And again, our next election is coming up May 6th of 2023. And again, as we've discussed in prior work sessions, we have proposed maps A and B. We've got them here in the chamber as well as in the lobby. Administration recommends approval of the ordinance.
You've heard the reading of item number five. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve map B.
I have a motion to approve map B. May I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor in a discussion. All in favor of approving item number five, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay. The motion carries. Thank you. Mr. City Manager, please read the public hearing.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. So the next, we have a public hearing, and we're asking council to conduct a public hearing to receive comments and consider a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to amend the tax abatement agreement with Suez Water Technologies and Solutions, Inc. I'd ask you to open the public hearing.
At this time, I will open the public hearing. Our city clerk will call out any names that would like to speak on behalf of the public hearing. After everyone speak, I will close the public hearing.
I don't have any at this time, mayor.
Okay, there's no one to speak on the public hearing? So at this time, I will close the public hearing. May I have a motion on item number six?
Move to approve.
Have a motion, may I have a second? Have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion?
Yes, mayor.
Councilmember Durio?
Can you explain this?
Yes, so, back in December of 2020, the city council authorized an abatement agreement with Suez Water Technologies and Solutions. And the original term of the agreement was from January 20, January 1st, 2023, through Janu, December 31st, rather, 2027. And due to some delay issues, Suez is asking to extend the dates of the agreement. And so, the administration recommends an extension of this agreement. Just for background purposes, the project in question is a $40 million upgrade to their existing, what, their facility. They're located off of Highway 90, near our airport. We expect that there'll be approximately 75 construction jobs and the retention of 16 existing jobs. So again, it's just an extension of that original 2020 agreement we are recommending approval.
Mr. City Manager, can you say how many permanent jobs?
Yeah, so it's a, essentially, it is a, an improvement to their existing facility. So by doing this, Suez is going to be able to retain 60 full-time jobs.
Okay.
So, since the original agreement was supposed to start on January 1st of this year, did they, did it start then?
No, sir.
The abatement?
No, sir. So we're asked, they're additionally asking, asking for additional time, so they have not started yet.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our agenda. So at this time, I will open the floor for public comment. If you haven't already done so, fill out the green slip to the back of the room. Hand it to the clerk to the front of the room. She will call your name out, and it's time for you to speak. You will have three minutes to come to the podium. The green light will come on, and at the end of your three minutes, the red light will come on, letting you know that your three minutes are up. Thank you.
Steve Hoffman, 745 Blarney Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Madam Mayor, members of the council. I came today to speak to you again about my favorite topic, Battleship Texas. I knew today was gonna be an issue that was gonna be a hot topic. A lot of people are gonna pull apart on this topic, and I hate to see that, but I think it can happen. And I don't want it to happen around the Battleship Texas. It's one of the best things coming our way. And if you don't believe that, then I'll sit down and talk to you some more. But I called an old friend. He's, he's ex-president of the Sweet Beaumont City Chamber of Commerce, a guy named Jim Stokes. Someone who's been around here for a while, knows Jim. Jim grew up in Beaumont. His dad worked with my dad in '31. Dad worked at Gulf States. Jim Stokes, his dad worked there. We actually spent alternate Thanksgivings and Christmases at each of his house, so we became quite bonded. So when the battleship was coming around, I called Jim and said, "Well, I'm working on a project, and with, got him Mike Getz." And I said, "I think we've got an opportunity to get this ship." And I said, "I kinda feel like that's a one-time, don't mess it up because you won't get it again" kind of deal. And he went off like a rocket. He said, "That's one of the kind of projects we've been trying to get in Beaumont when I was president." He said, "That is gonna be so good." And I said, "Yeah, something about the..." I was able to work my way to a couple of meetings with the foundation when they were talking about this. And they see the traffic going across the bridge of Nature's River to be a big deal. And he said, "Yeah, it's 95,000." I said, "How do you know that?" And he says, "That's stuff we looked at all the time, and that's an important number." He says, "We want what it will do, and it'll attract people to Beaumont and bring money with them." And I said, "That, that will then help the city totally. A lot of projects that we can't do because money is tight, we'll have money." He says, "That, that's my vision." He said, "And Jim was a graduate of West Point. Spent his time in Vietnam, as he said, rebuilding the same bridge. They built it during the day, then that night, the Vietcomc cook and blew it up. And they were just, he said he spent years building that bridge. But then he went to teach it at West Point, and he's very knowledgeable. He's very sharp. And for him to say this, and to be that excited about it, tells me we got a good deal. And I, and we're coming up to a point in time when we gotta make a serious decision, and it's either gonna come our way, or Baytown's gonna take it from us. And you're not getting that back. And they want it, although the foundation looks very favorably at Beaumont for a lot of reasons. And I heard those, and I just said, "We don't need to mess this one up." And I really appeal to y'all, because four votes is what it takes to make this thing not blow up. And it's coming. And you gotta make that decision sometime soon. I know if you're gonna get mad, say, "Mike Getz may be mad, so I'm not gonna vote, yeah, have my councilman vote for him." It's, it's like shooting yourself in the foot. We need to move the city forward, and you bring money into the city. The city's got money to do for a lot of things that we haven't done and could do. So, I'll step down, but anyway, I just, you know, let's, let's keep the city in mind. Let's not get sidetracked on an important issue. I do know that I've seen, it's got international following on this ship. I mean, people from other countries have talked about it, which means we might have international tourists. And for us to have, you know, a possibility of making, making a KIMA, you know, park and everything like that, in, on the riverfront, I think it'd be great. And I think we need not to mess this opportunity up. And, and let's, let's move forward. And the days are getting close. The ship's carrying a move to Galveston for repair. And then after that, it's gotta go home somewhere.
Thank you, Mr. Holland.
Derek Shepherd, 2445 Goliath Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Hello, Madam Mayor.
Hello.
My name is Montez Powell, president of Hot Wind Hedges, a national outreach organization. And we are in your community. We want to put on a massive event. It's gonna be a March for Hope. We have so many people that came out of hostile environments. Hostile environments, and myself, I was a product of Hot Wind Hedges. We've been through multiple cities, even Houston, Texas. We're in partnership with the chief of police, Troy Finner, and Sylvester Turner, the mayor of Houston. And we went out and we actually transformed lives of people through gospel concerts and also marches. And so, what we want to do, we want to do a march with about 300 and 400 people. We tried to march on Crow Road, and we was trying to seek some assistance from you guys to actually aid us with maybe some escorts to go down, down that street and march onto the concert setting. And so, we're here to actually help Beaumont move forward. We want to assist you guys with the crime in the area. And we've been successful in multiple cities, and so we're asking you guys to actually assist us in this event.
Well, thank you. Can you please announce the date of your event?
The 27th of this month.
And, and the address?
3780 Crow Road. We'll be hosting a three-day revival at our church location that we just now purchased. And the march will actually corral the community to come out and to invite them to the new church home.
Well, thank you so very much. We need all the help that we could get, especially with our youth. The one thing I just want to tell you, make sure that you call the police department to request a permit for your march, and you need to do that probably today. I think you need like a two-week window prior to your date. But call them today so that you could request your permit for your police escort.
It's the traffic department, mayor.
Trap, traffic.
So actually, you can go to municipal court, and they can direct you to the traffic department. That's where they're housed.
Okay. And that's on Arlene Street. You know, when you get a ticket and you have to go before the judge, that building. But thank you so very much for your assistance and your input in the community. And I did speak with someone this morning from your congregation, and we welcome it. Thank you so very much. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Mayor, Christopher Jones, 1045 Dusset, Beaumont, Texas. He wants to speak, but he is coming from the overflow room. Oh, is he here? I'm sorry, I didn't know he was here.
Thank you, ma'am. I didn't have to run this time. Good afternoon again, mayor and council. I do want to thank you all for making a decision on today on, at least moving forward, moving the city forward with a new city manager. I do look forward to working with this individual and whatever team they develop, especially through you all, because you, like I said, are my direct access. So I'm, I'm looking forward to, to whatever we have in store. I would like to say, I've never seen a process so grueling, even with our past city manager and the reform that was thrown at council a while back. I've never seen that. But I, I will say, I do appreciate three of my elected for pushing the envelope forward and making sure that we secure, again, a prideful future in the city of Beaumont, regardless to who takes us there. Again, I thank you all for your time and for your attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
That's all I have, mayor.
Okay. At this time, I will go to council member comment, and I'm gonna start with you, Councilmember Neal.
No comment, mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Samuel?
I think I've said enough, no comment.
Thank you. Councilmember Felshaw?
No comment.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner?
No comment.
Whoa. Councilmember Getz?
No comment.
Councilmember Durio?
I got a comment. Just a couple of things. First, I want to thank Keith Folsom and his staff and Entergy for, you know, not only getting that check, but saving us money in the long run. Appreciate all your hard work. Also, I had the pleasure of attending this Saturday, Mr. Sam Peterson's 90th birthday party. Read a proclamation, the mayor couldn't make it. He's a pillar in our community. A lot of us went to, he taught a lot of us in high school, and it was a pleasure being able to do that for him. Also, last week, I worked with Beacon Church. They were here with Harvest for Lost Souls. And this bunch of volunteers come by, down, and they were looking for some work to do. And so, Kennedy Andrews called me, and they called, and I said, I made a few phone calls, and we ended up going out to the botanical gardens. And there's a lot of weeds to pull out there, and I actually went out and pulled some weeds. And, but very nice people, and we, I surely appreciated them coming down here and, you know, volunteering to do a little bit of work. And last, I just want to say, this was really, like Mr. Jones says, this is a hard decision and a grueling deal, but I'm glad we made it through. And I think, and since I've been on council, we've had a few of these decisions that we, we didn't all agree upon, but I think we agreed to disagree, and we moved on. And I'm still good with everybody on council. I got, I went to a conference, and I always, I'ma steal that. They have persons say, "I love all of y'all, and ain't nothing you can do about it." That's all I'm here.
Thank you, Councilmember Durio. Back to Councilmember Getz.
I did think of a comment, not related to city business, but if you haven't seen that Elvis movie, you ought to go see that Elvis movie. It was really good. I got my wife out, and she, she enjoyed it, so it's, it's a really, really good movie.
Thank you. City Attorney?
I think I talked a lot today. No comment.
Well, you earned all your comments today. And Mr. Boone?
No comment, thank you.
Look, before I could even get... Okay. Look, before I could even get your name out, Todd?
I just want to echo what the city manager said earlier. I really do wish y'all would take the time to call me, or I'll be happy to meet with you this next week about the budget process. The state of Texas has changed the way we calculate the property tax rate twice in the last three years. It's rather complicated. So the more I can explain to you before the workshop, the more you understand about the rate-setting process, the more productive of a workshop we'll have.
Thank you. Okay, well, I was in Phoenix on, I flew out to Phoenix on Sunday, flew back last night, drove in from Houston, got home about 11 o'clock. So I'm saying all of that to say that I miss the candlelight visual for our fallen officer, Sheena Yarborough. And otherwise, I would have been there. But to the Yarborough family, you are always in our prayers and condolences. Continue to that family and her husband Tyler. And I'm sorry I did miss it. Also, I was in Phoenix for a Human Rights Communication Workers of America, whom I was a member for 32 years of that union. And they invited me to speak on a women's forum. And it was former Communication Worker of America members that are now elected officials. And so I was happy to go and speak on behalf of the union that supported me and that I was a part of. And they were very enlightened about Beaumont and to hear that I was the first female mayor to be elected. And so Sheila Jackson Lee was also there. Mayor Turner could not make it, but I believe he did send his representative. So it was a really, really big conference on human rights. And I really enjoyed it. Also, again, Attorney Reed cannot say how much we appreciate everything that you did, all of these changes, adjustments. And I'm going to serve. And I'm going to do my part to the best of my ability. Because when I lay down at night, I want to make sure I sleep because I need my rest. I'm getting older. And so I also want to recognize that Port Arthur Councilmember Cal Jones was in the audience. Okay, he did leave, but I want to recognize that. And also present is President Emeritus Vernon Durden from the 100 Black Men. And so just want to thank everyone for coming out today. But also, how many times will you see Energy presenting a check? Because normally, we're writing those checks every month. So I want to thank Keith Folsom, you and your staff, for the great work, for the money that we will be saving our citizens, the energy efficient portion of that, not to mention what it's going to do for the environment. Thank you so, so very much for taking advantage of that, and you and your staff. And also, Mr. Peterson, Mayor Pro Tim, thank you so very much for going out and reading that proclamation for me for Mr. Peterson's 90th birthday. He was one of our schoolteachers at Hebert High School. He taught drafting. He was a drafting teacher. He was a drafting teacher. And his wife, Ms. Peterson, she was our science teacher in junior high school at Odom. So just want to acknowledge his 90th birthday, and sorry I couldn't make it on Saturday. But again, I want to thank everybody for coming out. I think you got to see the process of city council work to its fullest today. Again, we're not going to always agree. We have to agree to disagree. And if we agreed all the time, it would be nice view. But that's, you know, that's not the case. But it's the process. And so you saw the process go forth today. We have a new city manager. I would like to say that I am a part of another history-making moment here in Beaumont, because he will serve as the first African-American city manager in the history of this city. So again, thank you all for coming. We do not have executive session because we held it here in front of you so that the citizens could see the entire process and go out. And again, as I always say, spread the love. Thank you.